9:01, I'm going to call this meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Establish that we have a quorum present, and there's six of us here. First item is the consent agenda. The regular commission may request for consent agenda items to be moved to the regular agenda for presentation and public comment, otherwise the consent agenda will be considered in one vote. All items on the consent agenda have been recommended for approval by staff with no opposition received to date. Since some items on the consent agenda may require a public hearing, the commission will accept public comment on any item on the consent agenda in one public hearing. So I'm going to open it up for public comment. The only item on the consent agenda is the minutes from last month. Anyone wish to speak? Alright, I'm going to close public comment, take a motion.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six zero. Regular agenda subdivision plaits. The Planning Commission has final authority for approval. Appeals may be directed to the City Council. A replat of lots three and four, block one, Ramsey subdivision, a request for approval of a replat of lots three and four, block one, Ramsey subdivision being .306 acres northwest of Era and Fulton Streets, and a variance from chapter 103A2 of the land subdivision ordinance to maintain a 30-foot paving width for Fulton Street and Urban Local Street.
Good morning. My name is Rafael Alvarado. I'm a planner with the Planning and Development Services. So this is a replant, and it requires a variance along Fulton Street, which is the front yard frontage. For the vision plan, the neighborhood, it is neighborhood, and for the zoning district, it is single-family residential.
Rafael, I just want, you mean to interrupt, but I believe this one was, a withdraw was requested. This is the one that's going to be withdrawn.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't think you have to, you don't have to continue to present.
Okay.
Is that correct?
So the applicant has requested to withdraw this case?
Yes.
Alright. Do we need to take a motion to withdraw it, or?
Yes. Is that correct, Brendan?
Yeah.
Make a motion to withdraw. Second.
Okay, we have a motion to withdraw and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Six zero. Adrod subdivision. A request for approval of a final plat for Adrod subdivision being five acres northwest of Lake Drive and West 33rd Street, and a variance from chapter 103A2 of the subdivision ordinance to maintain a 30-foot paving width without curb and gutter for Lake Drive and Urban Collector Street.
Good morning, planning commissioners. Jeff Fisher, chief planner. Our next subdivision case today is the Adrod subdivision. This is a five-acre property that had a house at the front where lot two is. They want to subdivide and sell off lot one, so it's going to go from one lot into two lots. RS1 zoning, northwest of Lake Drive and West 33rd Street. It's in District Two, Tom Thompson, in the Riverside neighborhood. So there's a zoom-in of the plat. It's pretty straightforward. The lot two, where the home is, will be 0.161 acres. They have provided us with a separate structures plan, so it'll conform to all the setbacks that's there, and then lot one will just be reserved for future development. Zoning is RS1, so they have some options. They could look at rezoning, although I'm not sure how we would look at that in the area, because it is still neighborhood. The other option is they could come in with a replat of lot one and possibly punch a street through there and add some lots, or just keep it for one house. So they have some, some options. Because Lake Drive is deficient, it's only 30 feet wide, and it is a collector street. It does need a variance, so this one, we will look at the variance criteria on this. The plat conforms with the comp plan and zoning, no issues, meets the intended purpose statements. So quickly looking at the variance, Lake Drive functions adequately. We've had about three variances on this street over the last 10 years, and the main reason is Lake Drive has served more as a local street than a collector. It doesn't have curbs on either side, so it really feels more like a rural feel the further up you go. Also, there was some text dot data in some previous staff reports in '08 and '09 that showed it, the number of traffic counts, that serves more as a local. So for those reasons, staff's in support of the variance. It's an infill development. The additional 10 feet width would create an irregular jog in the street. So at this point in time, it makes sense to, as a local road, 10 years from now, who knows? But today, we're in support of the variance. Staff recommends approval of a final plat of the Adrod subdivision, approval of the variance to allow 30-foot paving width without curb and gutter, subject to the five conditions of approval in your staff report. Any questions or comments?
Questions for Jeff? Alright. Thank you, Jeff. I'm going to open it up for public comment. If you wish to speak, please state your name and your single member district or address.
Good morning, Russell with SKG Engineering. We would ask your approval of this plat as presented, and the variance is as requested. There's a topic that has kind of come up in the past, and it's, I've seen it on all of our plat comments. It's plat comment number five. It's from the Fire Marshal's Office about putting a note about fire hydrants and the like. I really, I've talked about this and hadn't really pushed on it much in the past, but this is like saying that there's some rules that apply. So, you know, where do we stop? You know, this one, and then it's going to say, well, you need to go get a building permit, or you need to do this, or reference every single city ordinance. So I don't know why necessarily we need to effectively single out one specific citation of all the code of ordinances of the city of San Angelo to be putting on these plaits, because, you know, things could change in the future. These plaits are a perpetual document that's recorded at the county clerk's office, and so, you know, ordinances change, but these plat documents don't. So I really would like to see, or at least give some flexibility for us to maybe step back and have conversations with staff or Fire Department's Office about this one revolving, occurring fire department note. I just, I don't know the purpose of it being on plaits. You know, if they want to make a statement to it, let's add it as a note, so that everybody knows. But we all know that we've got to conform with the International Fire Code. It's an adopted ordinance, like every other ordinance that someone has to apply with. So I just, I just would ask that maybe we consider this, and you're going to see us, I think, on at least every one that we have before you today, the same note about adding, adding a note about the Fire Department access. So anyway, I'd ask your approval of this plat, and then maybe some flexibility on how we discuss this Fire Department note being placed on the plat. Thank you. Happy to answer. Any questions?
Any questions for Russell? Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Could someone speak to the comment, the note that Mr. Gully was referring to on the, the fire hydrants?
Yeah, I can, I can speak to that. Just seeing if anybody from the Fire Marshal's Office is here, but they're the ones who have requested that this be placed. I guess the short answer is, it's the plating stage when infrastructure requirements are triggered. And so effectively what we're doing here is deferring the fire hydrants. We could require fire hydrants now, at the time of plating, but instead of doing that, the development community has said, well, we don't necessarily know what's going on the property, where the buildings will go, and so that might play a role in where actually the fire hydrants are located. And so we're effectively deferring that again. And I think the Fire Marshal's concern is, is they have seen situations where, I guess that was, that information didn't filter down. I think, kind of the big picture way of looking at it is, when you buy a piece of property, you assume, because it's platted, all infrastructure requirements of the city have been met. And so this is just a way, basically, of telling the buyer, this is a, an infrastructure requirement that has not yet been met. We're passing it on to you. I think we'd be happy to have further discussion about whether or not this actually needs to be placed on the plat itself as a note, but that is the request of the Fire Marshal's Office. So we're a little hesitant to say, well, no, we don't need the note on the plat, without them signing off on it. In any case, we definitely want to keep it as a note in, in the staff report, as noting that it's a requirement, but future developers, the developer of a property five years from now is never going to come look at this staff report. And I guess the Fire Marshal's thought is, they may very well take a look at the plat document, so it's a way to notify them of the requirement.
So it is a requirement that, in the ordinance, that the fire hydrants be installed when the, when the plat is approved?
Well, not necessarily. I just mean, in the general sense, infrastructure requirements are triggered by the plat. I defer to the Fire Marshal's Office, and maybe Russell knows the better answer than I do, on when it's actually triggered. My guess is that it's triggered by both. They can require it at the plat, but they can also require it at development, which I guess is an argument for not having the note on the, on the plat. I'm just hesitant to remove this note, since it is a request and a requirement.
Of the Fire Marshal.
Of the Fire Marshal's Office. We can definitely have follow-up conversations. I know Mr. Gully has brought this up before, and when we took that to the Fire Marshal's Office, they were still pretty adamant that they wanted this on, on the face of the plat.
So you consider this a note, but it says condition of approval?
Well, it's, it's a condition of your approval that they place a note on the face of the plat itself.
And we've been placing that note on the plat, you know, and we can keep doing that. I just, in the grand scheme of things, you know, and there's kind of, when are fire hydrants required? And fire hydrants are required for structures. And so we're plating property, we're not, we're not putting a structure on the ground today. We're drawing lines on a piece of paper, so we're technically, you know, if there's a structure out there, then, then it probably should be covered by a fire hydrant today. If it's not, that's probably an issue that, that needs to be addressed, specific to that existing structure being located on the property. And it's, you know, water and sewer mains are required, you know. Now, a fire hydrant, if we go put in a new subdivision, we'll put in fire hydrants as part of a residential or full-scale development, because it's, we want to put those in and have the coverage. But on a lot of these infill projects, there's, there may or may not be a fire hydrant within proximity to this property. And so, you know, when someone goes in to get a building permit to place a structure on here, yes, they will have the responsibility to look at the International Fire Code and see, are we within the appropriate distance of, of a fire hydrant? So, you know, putting the note, it's not the end of the world, it's just one of those things. How many notes do we start putting on plaits about everybody, you know, reciting effectively all ordinances of the city of San Angelo apply? You know, maybe we just put one big note on there that every ordinance of the city of San Angelo applies and must be met to, for this property. It's, it's, it's kind of getting that specific to it. So I, I don't know. It's not a big battle on our end, it's just kind of one of these, I'm a picky detail kind of guy, so just wanted to have the discussion, since it's recurring over and over and over again.
Russell, before you go sit down. So the water and sewer taps you alluded to, when the plat's recorded, are the, are the water and sewer mains extended through the subdivision? Are the taps put in when this is recorded?
And on a lot of these infill projects, water and sewer mains will be in place. If not, we will see a note from engineering that says, and you'll see it on some other ones coming up, that water or, and/or sewer mains have to be installed. So, so if it's a main extension requirement, that's kind of triggered through engineering and so on, you know, we have to have water and sewer, water for sure, sewer if it's within 200 feet of the property. And then the services, engineering for commercial has been so kind to defer that, because, you know, we've had that discussion about the commercial side of things, so.
So are you using the same domestic water line for the, the subdivision lots that you would for the fire hydrants, or do you have a separate tap?
It's the same main, it's the same city mains. They'll, they'll set a tee and a valve and a fire hydrant off of that same city main that provides.
So when this is, when this is platted, if the utilities are being extended into this plat, as, as they, if they haven't been already, would that main be sized to accommodate fire hydrants in that subdivision?
Yes, the, the minimum city main size is eight inch, so the, you know, and there, again, we're working with engineering, and we make, we may bring in with an eight-inch line, but engineering may say, well, we need a 10, or 12, or 16 inch. So engineering will have that influence on the size of the main. But, but for sure, it's always at least an eight-inch main when we extend them for subdivisions.
Okay. So there is conversation, at least with the Fire Department, when you guys are putting the taps in, to make sure that it's, that the water supply is adequate for the hydrants that are needed in that subdivision?
Yes, when we do a design for a water main extension, the, the Fire Marshal actually signs off on that. There's a spot for the Fire Marshal to review and sign off on the, the design for any city main extensions.
Okay. Thank you, Russell.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on this case? If so, please come forward, state your name. Alright, I'm going to close public comment, open it up for discussion amongst the Planning Commission folks, or a motion. I'm not sure what to say about this fire hydrant issue. I understand Russell's point, but I certainly don't want to do something that, that prohibits the Fire Marshal from doing what they need to do down the road, or conveying this property without a clear understanding of, of the costs associated with the development of that land. So, do you think that, I mean, the placement of the fire hydrants is, is really going to be determined by the structures in that subdivision, is it not?
I believe so, yes.
And so, if we have water, which is a requirement, I mean, it-
Number three.
Number three, install necessary water and wastewater service lines. Is that not in consideration of the Fire Marshal? It sounds like Russell says that he has to sign off on the water taps that are, that are going to that property.
Again, I hate to speak for the Fire Marshal's Office, and maybe Mitchell can add some-
Yeah. Mitchell Gatlin, Engineering Services. Yeah, just want to address that number three. When we reference service lines, that is just like your domestic service line for that subdivision, so just like what would go to your standard water meter or standard sewer service, not an actual main, like a transmission main. Just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. Is the Fire Marshal involved in that approval?
Because those are just domestic services, not usually, they're only involved when you have an actual, like, transmission main being extended, so you're eight inch and above. When we reference service lines, that's more of like your one-inch, two-inch, three-inch service lines.
Okay. So, let's go back to that subdivision plat, if we could. When you talk about item three, you're not talking about it Lake Drive, you're talking about through the entire subdivision?
No, it would just be, so if they were to, say they were just to build one house on lot one, the new, the new five-acre lot.
Yes.
They would have to extend just, just the domestic lines to that house. That's what condition three is addressing. There's already an existing main running parallel with Lake Drive.
Right. If there wasn't a main, if this was undeveloped, and we're recording this plat, are they dragging the lines on Lake Drive to the boundary of that property, to the-
If water was not existing already on Lake Drive.
When this plat's approved, that's a condition of the approval of the plat.
Correct.
And that line, according to Russell, would have to be signed off by the Fire Marshal in order for it to be properly sized for this lot.
Correct. But in, yes, but in this case, there already is a water main on Lake Drive, so the Fire Marshal wouldn't be seeing the plan in this case.
Right. Okay.
Well, we can commit to meeting with the Fire Marshal's Office and bringing you all a report back at the next meeting.
Okay.
And maybe even having them here to, unless we can all agree to remove that note, if they're adamant about keeping that note on there, we can make sure someone's here from their office.
This may be something that the Development Task Force could work with the Fire Marshal on and resolve as well.
Yeah.
Because it is going to involve them mostly, not, not others, right?
Sure, yeah.
Alright. Okay. Anyone wish to make a motion, or share their comments or thoughts?
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six zero. Item C, Atmos Energy Subdivision, Section One, a request for approval of a final plat for Atmos Energy Subdivision, Section One, being 2.617 acres northeast of North Main Street and East 14th Street, and a variance from chapter 103A1 of the subdivision ordinance to maintain a 60-foot right-of-way width for North Main Street and Urban Arterial Street, and a variance from chapter 103A2 of the subdivision ordinance to maintain a 34-foot paving width for North Main Street and Urban Lo- Arterial Street. That doesn't seem to be right. North Main Street is, is East 14th the narrower street?
Yes.
So, we're going to maintain a 34-foot paving width for East 14th Street, not North Main Street.
Hang on. It is for Main Street, and that's one of the reasons we're going to discuss about the variance. It's, even though it's an arterial, it's very, very narrow.
Okay.
Or, should say, more narrow than, than what it would be.
Okay.
Okay. And 14th Street, again, is a, it does meet the, those other three streets meet the minimum width.
Okay.
Okay. Jeff Fisher, so this is Atmos Energy Subdivision, Section One. It was part of a planned development zoning 1101 for warehousing and storage, so it was specifically for Atmos Energy, District Three, Harry Thomas and the Paula neighborhood. So again, yeah, this, this is very unique, it's got kind of a wonky intersection, and the block does cover four streets in between the block. It was three tracts, and now that they, any future development they want to put, I believe in the middle and the right, that triangle, so that, that east side would trigger a plat and clean up those, those three remainders. Here's a good look at it now. There's already an existing old building that they occupy on the westmost lot, and then some of the parking in the east, so if they want to do any future expansions, this is just allowing them to do that and clean it up. The variance is requested on North Main. So North Main is an arterial road with a right-of-way width of 60 feet in lieu of 80 feet, and a paving width of 34 feet in lieu of 64. So the requested variances are actually for the right-of-way and the paving. But East 14th, North Emmerich, and East 18th are all in conformity. So staff's in support of the plat. The PD allows warehousing and storage. If they do go to rezone, they'll have to meet the Neighborhood Center policies, but again, the zoning prevails, and so they're good. Final plat's consistent with the purpose statements in the ordinance. So this is a unique situation. We are in support, both planning and engineering, on the right-of-way and paving width variances, and here's why. It's about over a mile and a half where Main Street is only 30 feet wide, between the Loop 67 and East 26th Street. So once you go north, where this is located, it is only 34 feet. So again, similar to other cases, giving the additional incremental width is going to be, create an irregular jog, and that's going to be danger for motorists. If they give the right-of-way, same thing, it's going to create an irregular jog, and also they've got parking on that side, they'd have to rip up the curbs and lose some of that parking, so, which again, if, under normal circumstances, we might require that, but I think in this case, we believe it's unique, given that it's an infill development. No additional right-of-way would be required. If they had to give the right-of-way, then they would create that hardship, so we're in support of this. Staff recommends approval of a final plat of the Atmos Energy Subdivision, Section One, a variance to maintain a 60-foot right-of-way width for North Main, and a variance to maintain a 34-foot paving width of North Main, subject to the six conditions. Any questions or comments?
You have questions for the staff?
I've got a, I've got a question. I'm not suggesting that it, that I, that I support this, I'm just asking why there's not a variance for sidewalk requirement? So I'm looking at the thoroughfare classifications, and it shows arterial roads require a sidewalk.
So, in areas of highly trafficked areas near a school, or in commercial, the current subdivision ordinance suggests that a sidewalk is something to be done, but it's not a requirement. And the, and the current ordinance, collectors and arterials is always a bit subjective, and that's, I think, why we're bringing y'all the sidewalk ordinance forward. And so in this case, it's more industrial in nature, kind of a wonky intersection, and so we, we did study that, and we don't believe, in this case, a sidewalk should be required.
Well, I mean, I don't disagree with that, I just don't know why it's cited as a variance. If we cite it for other collector streets, or streets in neighborhoods that have less heavy traffic, then why?
Well, again, under the current ordinance, sidewalks are not explicitly required.
Yeah, I understand that.
It says they may be required, and so-
But we call them a variance in our presentations.
Well, we, we try not to call it a variance for sidewalks, because it's technically not a variance, it's just at your discretion whether to require them or not. And so technically, again, if the, the applicants don't have to request a variance, they don't have to pay a variance fee for requesting those sidewalks, because it's, again, it's technically not a variance, it's, it's merely at your discretion. So some cases, we will recommend a sidewalk, and you can decide yes or no, and some cases like this, we're not even recommending it. And so unless, I mean, you could always override us and say, well, even though staff's not recommending it, we want to require a sidewalk anyway. So, but again, there's technically no need for a variance under our current ordinance.
Okay. Any other questions for the staff? Thank you, Jeff. I'm going to open it up for public comment.
Good morning, Russell Gully with SKG, single member District Three for this one. Really kind of, Luke, building on your question, we, we met with staff and, about this project, and talked to them about it, and so in that meeting, we, we kind of all come to agreement that we didn't feel that sidewalks were necessary at this location, so we didn't ask for the variance. So we had the pre-meeting, and we talked about it, and we all can, agreed that, you know, hey, this isn't a good place for sidewalks, so we didn't need to ask for the variance, as we do on some, when we ask for a variance, that means they want it and we don't want it. In this case, we were able to come to agreement that it's not necessary in this location.
I think, I think my, my point was just a question of consistency in the budget.
Yeah, and that's why hence the sidewalk coming, ordinance coming forward to straighten it out. But anyway, we, we asked that you would approve this plat with the variances as requested, and would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Russell? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on this case? Alright, I'm going to close public comment. Anyone want to ask more questions or make a motion?
Need to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Six zero. Item D, replat of lots two and three, Sunset Terrace addition. A request for approval of a replat of lots two and three, Sunset Terrace addition, being .303 acres southwest of Howard Street and Houston Hard Expressway, and a variance from chapter 103A2 of the subdivision ordinance to maintain a 36-foot paving width for Howard Street and Urban Collector Street.
Thank you, commissioners. Jeff Fisher. So this is very straightforward. On October 11th, this went to ZBA to avoid, or to fix an encroachment. So there is originally two lots that you see in the red. The lot to the south is going to be a little bit smaller, it's going to be about 42 feet wide, instead of the required 50. The ZBA, zoning board of adjustment, did approve that on October 11th, and that's going to allow this plat to go forward with a slightly narrower lot width. So you can see the, where the encroachment was, the dotted line was where lot two was before, and now it's going a little bit further south to the black line like this. So that'll allow five feet, as required, to the house, and then this will be a 42.35 foot lot. So that's what you're approving today, very straightforward. Howard Street is a collector street at 50 feet, similar to the first case today with the Adrod addition. Howard serves more as a local road than a collector road, and given the narrower street width and the curbs already there, so that is 36 feet, and they, if this was a local road, they wouldn't need the variance at all, because there is a four-foot sidewalk there. Unfortunately, because it's a collector, we're here today to discuss the, the variance. 20 notices were mailed out, staff did not receive any in support or against. We believe that the plat conforms with a comprehensive plan and purpose statements. Supporting the variance on Howard Street, staff is in support. We believe that it functions adequately at 36 feet. It extends at 36 feet for almost two miles from Sherwood Way, all the way at its north endpoint, Ed- the way at its north endpoint, Ed, Edmund Street. So, and it's got curbs on both sides. This is an infill development. It's also part of a future city CIP project to resurface as it is. So again, for that reason, additional expenses would be generated by the owner if they had to rip up those curbs and widen it, and that would be unsafe, and so you guys know that. Approval of a replat of Lot Two and Three, so staff recommends the approval with the variance to allow a 36-foot paving width, and subject to the four conditions of approval. Taxes paid, a couple minor adjustments on the, on the language and, on the plat. And we've stricken, it's actually three conditions. We've stricken the old fourth condition, now that the variance is given, so that's been addressed, and then water and wastewater service lines. And again, that's not a main, just the taps. Any questions or comments?
Any questions for the staff? Thank you, Jeff. I'm gonna open it up for public comment.
Good morning. Erica Carter, Carter for Interprets Engineering. We just ask that you guys approve, guys and girls, approve this as it was presented. And if you have any questions, let me know.
Any questions for Erica? Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? All right, I'm gonna close public comment.
Make a motion to approve as presented. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Six-zero. Item E, BNR Subdivision Section Five. A request for approval of a final plat for BNR Subdivision Section Five being .91 acres southwest of Cox Lane and Ben Ficklin Road, and a variance from Chapter 10, 3A2 of the subdivision ordinance to maintain a 24-foot paving width without curb and gutter for Cox Lane and Urban Collector Street.
Thank you, Chair Stribling. Planet Commissioners. Our next case is the BNR Subdivision Section Five. They are replating, or excuse me, a final plating just this one lot. This is another infill development in a series of infills along Cox Lane. The zoning on this block, north of the Mobile Home Park, is office warehouse, so most of these uses are office warehouse-related and, and heavy equipment storage, and that's what these guys are, I believe they wanna have a future telecommunications office here, and it used to be storage. So again, office warehouse, it's a little under an acre. And this is the, the plat at, so staff is in support of the subdivision plat. It conforms with the purpose statements, and office warehouse zoning is what's there right now. Couple things on this. There needs to be a paving width variance, because Cox Lane is deficient. It's short by 13 feet. It needs to be 50 feet, so it's only 24. So we're gonna look at that first, and then we are requesting a sidewalk on this one, under Chapter 95. So on the paving width variance, in this case, we don't see any reasons why the additional paving width shouldn't be extended. We've had a couple other plats over the last two or three years on this street. Again, this was only 24 feet, and they've dedicated their 13 feet of paving. And that those two other plats in 2017 and 2019, they weren't seeking variances at all. They just went ahead and paved it. They also put in sidewalks on the 2017 plat. So, we believe that the topography's relatively flat, and Cox Lane is going to go about another mile and a half to the west. That's gonna open up to residential development. So this is probably a good map of it here. So we really want that, that paving width in this case. If we don't get it now, it's gonna come back on the city and the residents of the city to pay for it and close that gap. I think we'll just go over the sidewalks now too, since the map kinda shows both. So Ben Ficklin, 2023, TechDOT's planning to put in sidewalks along Ben Ficklin, and then in 2018, Section Three of this BNR subdivision required a sidewalk. So you can see, closing that gap would be important to having pedestrian access in the area, and I think the biggest thing is just that we really need that road width. So this is the existing sidewalk. It's about 1,100 feet long in front of BNR Section Three, and then this is looking at the property is on your east side of that second map where the, or on the photo where the fence is. And then as you go further down, Ben Ficklin's at the end of that intersection. So staff recommends approval of the BNR Subdivision Section Five, but denial of the variance to maintain a 24-foot paving width, excuse me. Approval of the BNR with the sidewalk and denial of the variance, subject to five conditions in the staff report. Any questions or comments on this one?
Any questions for the staff?
So, just to clarify, you are asking for sidewalks and a wider street?
Yes, correct.
Okay, and that's what the others did on BNR Three?
Correct. And just to clarify, so BNR Section Three, they did give the paving width, and they put in the sidewalk. BNR Section Four, which I believe is at the, the corner over here, they did not put in a sidewalk, but they did, they did pave the street.
So, you showed a picture of the sidewalks. Can you identify the lots in this map that correspond to those sidewalks that we saw?
Yes. So this was BNR Section Three. That got approved in 2018. This is the current plat, BNR Section Five. And then right on that corner of, of Ben Ficklin was Section Four. So that one, they had to extend paving of the street, but they didn't have to do a sidewalk. Three, they had to do a sidewalk and the paving, and this is Five, and we're asking for the sidewalk and the paving like we did with Three.
The arrow that you were showing is the Mobile Home Park. Are you talking about the land that fronts on Cox?
Yes, only on Cox Lane, correct.
Okay.
That the, I'm sorry, yeah, it's, it's technically a double frontage, but that's a private development. So the, the back of the property, that's not a public road, so there's no requirement there. But that's what you're seeing on the map is that private road.
Everything is Cox, which is on the north side of this track that we're looking at.
Correct, correct. So it's gonna be where the...
And the sidewalk that we saw was on Cox.
That's correct.
Okay.
So where that purple line is, where it says BNR Section Three, that's Cox Lane. So we want the sidewalk to continue along that purple line.
Okay. Could you roll through one more slide so that we can see the, the other development that's proximal to this site, please? Right there.
Okay.
So, are the warehouse buildings in the picture on the left to the west of the site?
Yes.
Okay. Is this taken from the site?
Yes. Uh, no, it's, it's taken a little, there's a gap in between.
Okay.
There's a couple existing developments. So I took it standing from the, between the subject property that we're looking at and these properties that got the sidewalk.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Jeff.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna open it up for public comment.
Russell with SKG Engineering, single member District One for this one. We would ask you to approve this plat with the variances as requested. If you're not inclined to approve both variances, at a minimum, we would like to see the, get the sidewalk variance, as we, as Jeff alluded to, Section Four, which is closer to Bryant and the, the future TechDOT sidewalks, was not a requirement for, for that plat. So we would kinda like to stick along with that line. And, and let me kinda tell you what the purpose of this property is. This is gonna be a, an un, I don't wanna say manned, unpersoned telecommunications facility, unstaffed, you know, they'll, it'll be a, that, and I, I don't understand all the technology, but it, they just build kind of a building and put a tower there, and, and they broadcast their signal for wireless internet and data and, and whatnot. So, so this property is not gonna be a storefront, or, or have people really coming in, in and out. It'll only be the occasional, once they get it up and operational, it'll be the occasional service person coming in to, to make sure everything is up and operational. On Condition Four and Five, because it is, doesn't have a need for water and sewer services, we would ask that those be deferred to, at whatever point in the future there would be a need for the sewer and/or water service. We, we just hate to put in a, a water tap and, and never use that, and now we've got a potential for a, a leak or something to occur. So, so we would like in request that, that Item Four and Five be deferred to a later stage of development. And typically for water and sewer services, they are for commercial property, and in this case, because it, we don't anticipate the need anytime soon for what their immediate plans are for this property, that we just would ask your deferral of the water and sewer services. And be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have questions for Mr. Gully?
So the, we're talking about widening the road, putting in the sidewalks, and then just deferring the, the sewer and the water at this point. Yeah, we, we would like at a minimum to defer the sidewalk, or, or not require the sidewalk as part of this project. You, you know, we, we really like to not have to do the, the street widening, but we, we understand that requirement. Although we're, we're just, we're not really creating as part of this property development. We're not creating really any additional pedestrian traffic for sure, and very, very limited vehicular traffic through this location.
My only concern is that there's a lot of foot traffic through that area. They're going up to Stripes, and those buildings, I own one of those buildings, so I see the, the foot traffic, and those are unstaffed as well. They're just warehouses. But there is a tremendous amount of foot and bike traffic through there, and as they're going through that area, it does get dangerous.
Okay. Yep. What is the classification of Cox Lane?
Minor collector?
Yeah, I'm not, I believe it's a minor collector.
Okay.
And right now in the ordinance, there's no distinction, so it's, it's just a collector. That's okay.
Okay. Thanks, Russell. Anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm gonna close public comment. Trinidad, I think your point is, is very valid. The sidewalks are for egress through the property, not necessarily to the property. And this is, there's a lot of traffic on that road, and as it's widened, there will be more. And it needs to be widened. There's a lot of undeveloped land that will be subdivisions as the staff has alluded to, and so I, I would support a widening of the road and a sidewalk on this stretch. TechDOT is, you said Ben Ficklin Road? Is where TechDOT's putting a sidewalk? Is that...
That's correct.
You have purple noted on 87. Are they coming down Ben Ficklin Road or not?
No, I don't believe so. I believe the sidewalks are on South Bryant.
Okay.
That they would construct, but not on...
Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Yeah, my bad on that. It's, it is Bryant.
No problem.
Okay.
All right. Anyone else wanna share their thoughts, or make a motion?
Jeff, can you go to Item One, Two, and Three? I'm sorry, the next one. I apologize. Thank you.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve with the exception of Condition Four and Five, and have that deferred.
Second.
What are Conditions Four and Five?
The water and sewer.
And that's the type of permitting?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve with deferral of Items Four and Five. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Six-zero. All right, Item F, first replat in Block 13, Ferraris Edition. Request for approval of a first replat in Block 13, Ferraris Edition, being 2.052 acres northwest of Pulliam Street, between North Main Street and Malone Street.
Thank you, Chair Stribling Commission. The first replat in Block 13, Ferrari Edition, this is just over two acres. The north part, I believe, so what they, what they're doing is it's, it's an existing food warehousing facility, and they just wanna be able to expand. And they have nine different lots. They've got five to the north with a piece of Emmerich Street that was closed by the city, and then four lots on the bottom, also with a piece of Emmerich Street that was closed. So they're gonna just combine all this together into one lot and be able to go forward. It's in District Three, Harry Thomas and the Fort Concha neighborhood. So there's the existing building. You can see existing buildings at the front of the property, and by replating, they'll be able to build on the north half that faces Upton Street in the future. Staff is recommending a sidewalk on this one, and we'll go over that briefly in a minute. The plat conforms with the comp plan and the purpose statements. So here's another drawing. There's many sidewalks in this area. This is about 1.6 miles, Pulliam Street, and then right on the west side of that drawing is, is Main Street, a busy commercial street that has along a, a bus line as well as Pulliam. So I, I did note a lot of people walking when I went out and did a site visit, particularly in this area. There's a lot of, it's a mix. So, yes, this particular block is industrial and heavy commercial, but as soon as you go this way, you've got a lot of mix of commercial and residential uses along there. So people are, are walking back and forth. So we do want a sidewalk here. They put a parking lot sometime between, I think, 2009 and 11, according to Google Historical Aerials that I found in the front of the property. And so that would have to be removed to make way for the sidewalk. One of the signs and a fence that encroaches a bit would also have to be removed. So we've made that a note as part of the condition of approval, if you all approve the sidewalk. Pardon me on that. So, staff recommendation is to approve a first replat in Block 13, Ferrari Edition, and a sidewalk adjacent to Pulliam Street, subject to three conditions. So payment of taxes. On this one, I did get an email from Engineering. Condition Two is not required, so we're just gonna assume that it's not there. Sewer main extension is not required in this case, therefore that, we can strike Condition Two as not being required. So you'll have number one, and then number three, they have okay to deferral on the drainage study. So you really, you'll have one condition, and then the third will be a, a note that's deferred, along with the other two notes. And so that's just, again, if the sidewalk is approved by you all, they'll have to remove the parking lot in the public right-of-way. If it's not, there's, we still need to look at whether they need to do a right-of-way encroachment application and get approval from City Council for that parking lot that's in the right-of-way. So there's a couple things they're gonna have to do anyway to fix before the plat can be recorded, but otherwise, it's fairly straightforward. Any questions or comments on this one for me?
So this involves TechDOT?
Yes, I believe so. We do the right-of-way encroachment approval process, but TechDOT would obviously have to be involved. However, if they're installing a sidewalk now, then they can remove all those encroachments, and so there shouldn't be any issues there. Of course, whatever they remove, they're gonna need to fix. So if they're taking, ripping up any pavement, or leaving any potholes or curbing, they're gonna have to fix that. And I may defer some of those details to Engineering, how that, how that's gonna work, if they have to do any major improvements.
Anyone else have questions for the staff? Jeff, thank you.
You're welcome.
I open it up for public comment.
Russell with SKG, single member District Three for this one. PAC Marketing, PAC is, is proposing to expand a big cooler on the back of their existing facility, hence the requirement for this plating. We, we conveyed with them, we shared with them the, the, this report. They're willing, and, and as part of this expansion project, they're gonna be creating some new parking spaces around the back of the building, so that the parking spaces that are currently encroaching in their right-of-way, those can be scrubbed or painted out, or, or easily made to go away. So, so they're, they will rectify that one. Their real big issue, and they're, they seem to draw a line in the sand on this one. I'm, I'm not the kinda guy that likes to lay out threats, but, but they said if they have to build the sidewalk, they will not do the expansion, and they will look at leaving San Angelo. It's a, it's a hard line. I, I don't, I don't like the threats, but that's what they said. You know, it's, it's just one of those funny things. I, I even, you know, should I say it or not? You know, do you, do you draw the line, convey what they say? But from my understanding, that the sidewalk is a... But from my understanding, the sidewalk is a building permitting deal, because it's a note, right, Jeff? Not a condition of approval of the plat?
Yes, it's similar to some of the other items we've discussed today, where we review it as part of the subdivision plat, so it becomes part of the subdivision requirement, but we are okay deferring it to the building permit stage. So therefore, it shows up as a note on this, in this presentation. So Russell's correct, we wouldn't require it before the plat's recorded, we would just require it at the permitting stage.
So what my hope is with there, is that we can get the plat approved today, and then allow us, PAC and the city, to sit down and have a conversation kind of about this. If you look, and I don't know if you can pull up an aerial image, or any photographs of that location, they're paved pretty much all the way to the back of curb of the street, and so there's a walkable, there's a route that people moving up and down along that segment of Pulliam there can traverse that. There's, you know, other than the parking spaces, which will go away, there's solid pavement across there, and so as we've seen with all of these Tech Dot sidewalk projects in locations, when there's already pavement in place, Tech Dot is leaving that pavement there, and not putting a sidewalk there. So our hope is we can have some sort of discussion with PAC and the city, and kind of find some compromise to let this project move forward, and satisfy what the city is wanting to accomplish with their continuation of sidewalks, so.
And I'm gonna be very forthright with all of you, we discussed this earlier as well with the customer, that Tech Dot is planning to put in a sidewalk along Pulliam at some point in the future, it's designated on their plans, the problem is, if it's usually within a year, you know, a year and a half, we usually say, okay, knowing that they're coming in, the problem is, those plans could change, or it could be two or three years, and so I think the, kind of the policy directive right now is, we'll recommend a sidewalk in those areas where it's two years or more away, like this one, and then that way, those sidewalk areas get closed through the plating process. But it is just an FYI, that if we do nothing today, it is possible in two or three years, Tech Dot will put a sidewalk in there.
Okay.
And we have worked with developments, when we do get to the site plan stage, as Russell alluded to, if there is existing hard surface there, in many cases, we've allowed that to count. In other words, you wouldn't necessarily have to rip up an asphalt parking area, and replace it with a concrete sidewalk, if it's sufficient and meets ADA requirements and all of that.
Okay.
So I think that all being said, we all agree that the sidewalk is not a specific plat requirement, we can go ahead and get the plat recorded, and then the sidewalk requirement would come about as part, we'll have the discussion, it would be kind of part of the building permitting process.
That's correct. So it would just remain a note at the end of the plat?
Thank you, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have questions for Russell?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm gonna close public comment. Anyone want to share their thoughts, or make a motion?
Well, we would like for PAC to stay, that's for sure.
Yes.
Definitely removing the conditional for sewer, and then also the drainage study deferred, those are two really big things to do. I'm, the sidewalks, if Tech Dot, we don't know when Tech Dot's coming in, but that is part of Tech Dot Highway. I would like to make a motion to defer it indefinitely, and not until planning or permitting, but just to maybe remove the sidewalk, instead of deferring, and approve the rest as presented. Second?
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to defer the drainage study, to strike item two of the notes, right?
Yes.
And to remove the sidewalk requirement.
Yes.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Campus subdivision, section one, a final plat of campus subdivision, section one being 1.089 acres, northwest of Coliseum Drive, and East Fortieth Street, and variances from chapter 10, 3A2 of the subdivision ordinance, to maintain a 48-foot paving width for Coliseum Drive, an urban collector street, and to maintain a 24-foot paving width without curb and gutter for East Fortieth Street, an urban local street. I have a note here, that this one may be postponed.
So we did receive, Zach Rainbow, Planning and Development Services, we did receive a request for a 30-day waiver, we have some issues to work out amongst staff and the surveying team, and we will proceed forward with this on the first special call meeting of November. So, that's the request, an approval of a 30-day waiver.
Okay, that's not 30 days.
Well, that just means, under state law, you have to approve or deny a plat within 30 days, so they're waiving their, I guess, the requirement that it be decided within 30 days. They're allowing it to extend beyond 30 days, in other words.
So the special meeting is also gonna have other items on the agenda besides the sidewalk ordinance?
Well, that was not the original intent, but in order to accommodate this applicant, we're gonna have this one item on that, just so it's only delaying them two weeks, instead of four weeks, basically. It could, I mean, it could be postponed to the regular meeting, if in our discussions with them, we need some extra time, so it could be on either one of those meetings.
So we're gonna continue this one?
Yes, but under the new state law, you do have to formally accept their 30-day waiver.
Make a motion to approve. Second?
So we have a motion and a second to accept the 30-day waiver extension, and to continue this case to the next meeting.
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six, zero. Day addition, section one, request for approval of a final plat of the day addition, section one being 2.13 acres, located at the southeast corner of 30th and Travis Streets, and a variance from chapter 10, 3A2 of the subdivision ordinance, to maintain paving width of 36 feet for 30th Street, an urban local street.
Kyle Warren, San Angelo Planning Department, and I do apologize, there should be an image up here, but these things get compressed for the presentations, so. This is subdivision plat, day addition, section one, it's 2.13 acres, and it's to the northeast of Travis and East 30th Street intersections, District Two, Tom Thomas, in the Lakeview neighborhood. Here is an image of the plat. And the variance is for East 30th Street, as a street with paving variance, it's 36 feet at this moment, so be requiring two additional feet. The granting of the variance will not be detrimental to the public safety, health, or welfare, or be injurious to other property. East 30th Street will not have additional traffic to this plat. That could cause safety hazards, as the surrounding area is a vacant school and empty lies to the south. And if you look at East 30th Street, between Oaks and Travis, which is where this sits, there's not much development right now, and it is curb and guttered. The conditions upon which the request for a variance is based are unique to the property for which the variance is sought, and are not applicable generally to other property. Plat in question is a residential infill, it's in an established part of the city, as far as the grid goes, and as I said earlier, East 30th Street has existing pavement with curbs and gutters. The hardship would be widening East 30th Street by additional two feet, within creating an irregular jog, intersection with Travis Street, which will lead to unsafe driving conditions. And variance will not in any significant way vary the provisions of applicable ordinances, and we do not believe the applicable ordinances will be significantly varied if the variance is granted. Not detrimental, current 36-foot paving width of street created to service, I'm sorry, I wanted to start that again, current 36-foot paving width of street created to service adjacent plats functions adequately. Uniqueness, paving exclusively on one side is unique. The hardship, street serves area adequately, widening it would create an irregular jog, and no variation that we believe from the ordinance. We move to approve this, and these are the six conditions based for approval, they can also be found in your staff report.
Anyone have questions for the staff? Do you have an aerial of the?
I did, but it was at the very beginning, where the slide was missing the image.
Okay.
It should have been there, but there is a school in the southwest corner, if you're going on 30th to Oaks, that's been, it's vacant right now, and everywhere northeast going to Travis Street is undeveloped, which is where this plat sits, and lots to the south of 30th Street are largely undeveloped, I think there's like two or three houses between Oaks and Travis Street. So, our argument would be, as it is a large plat, you can see here, it looks like they plan to build, you know, nine or 10 homes on this, is that this is largely undeveloped, and so we don't believe, you know, higher, too much, excuse me, higher volume of traffic would be really associated with this, along that street, therefore, the variance in the street width paving.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Anyone have questions for the staff? All right. Thank you, Kyle. I'm gonna open it up for public comment.
Erica Carter, Cardiff Interest Engineering, I'm here to answer any questions, and ask that you approve as presented.
Thank you, Erica. Anyone else wish to speak? All right, I'm gonna close public comment, take a motion.
Make a motion to approve as presented. Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve as presented, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six, zero. Item I, first replat in block 168, Amaker subdivision of Love's Annex to Angelo Heights addition, request for an approval of a first replat in block 168, Amaker subdivision of Love's Annex to Angelo Heights addition, being .43 acres, located at the southeast corner of North Jackson and Bailey Streets, and a variance from chapter 10, 3A2 of the subdivision ordinance, to maintain a paving width of 37 feet for North Jackson Street, an urban local street, and to maintain a paving width of 30 feet for Bailey Street, an urban local street.
Kyle Warren again. And this is the image, the block 168, Amaker subdivision replat, is to the south and east of Bailey, or, excuse me, to the southeast of Bailey and North Jackson Street intersection, District Four, Lucy Gonzalez, in the central neighborhood. And here's the replat. The request is a partial variance to Wyand Street by portion of full required incremental half width for North Jackson Street, the minimum width is 36, or, excuse me, the minimum width should be 40 feet, in that case, requiring two additional feet, as it is, it's 36 feet. And for Bailey Street, its width is actually 30. I apologize for these mistakes, and it would require five additional feet, I'm sorry about that, but, if there's any confusion later on, just please ask me. North Jackson Street and Bailey Streets will not have additional traffic due to this replat that could cause safety hazards, as the two homes on both lots in question will remain the same. From what I understand, it's just a replating of north-south lots to east-west orientation. The replat in question is residential infill, which will not generate more vehicular traffic. Both North Jackson Street and Bailey have existing pavement, curb, and gutters, that is sufficient for traffic in this area. The hardship is just, if it caused, widening North Jackson Street by additional two feet, and Bailey Street by three feet, within creating an irregular jog at the intersection, which will lead to unsafe driving conditions, which is the hardship. And we do not believe that the applicable ordinances will be significantly varied if the variance was granted. We move to approve the first replat of block 168, Amaker subdivision, and to approve the requested variances, subject to four conditions for approval, showing up to the slide. Actually, it's three, we had to move one. Any questions?
Could you go back to the plat, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
And I do apologize for tripping up, I don't know what's gotten me today.
Okay, anyone have questions for the staff?
No.
So these lots were previously oriented north?
Yes, sir, north-south.
Okay. All right, thank you. We're gonna open it up for public comment.
Russell Gully with SKG, this is really the tale of a homeowner wanting to get a carport added to his property, and here we are, having to replat the property. I hate to admit it, but our fee probably is gonna be more than what it costs to build a carport, and I have empathy for these people, and we try to keep our costs as low as we can, but these are two neighbors who, you know, one neighbor, and they've been oriented like this for years, you know, back in the, whenever it was, they decided they wanted to, you know, take parts of other lots, and face their houses towards Bailey Street, as opposed to North Jackson Street, and have been like that for years and years, and one of them wanted to get a, add a carport to their property, and they told they couldn't until they replatted them, because of the legal description of the property, and so the neighbor, his neighbor heard about this, and wanted to make sure that he was properly now platted, and if he wanted to get a, build a carport, or get an addition at some point in the future, they could. So this is two residences that have been there for years, and just wanted to get a carport, so I don't know if there's any room in the interpretation, or revisit the ordinances that says if, take a condition like this, and they want to be able to get a carport, let them have a carport without having to go through this process. That's my soapbox discussion. We would just ask your approval of this plat as presented. Happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have questions for Russell? It's nice work, Russell, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? All right, I'm gonna close public comment, and take a motion, or comments?
Approve as presented.
We have a motion and a second to approve as presented, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six, zero. Item J, third replat in block eight, Mrs. Julia A. Bailey subdivision, a request for approval of a third replat in block eight, Mrs. Julia A. Bailey subdivision, being 9.134 acres, southeast of Old Cristoville Road, and South Chadburn Street, and variances from chapter 10, 3A2 of the subdivision ordinance, to maintain a paving width of 45 feet for North Chaburn, and urban arterial street, and to maintain a paving width of 30 feet for Bailey Street, an urban local street.
Rafael Alvarado, Planning and Development Services, this is the replat in the Mrs. Julia A. Bailey subdivision. This property is 1.14 acres, it is in District Two, Tom Thompson, Riverside neighborhood, and that is the aerial map of the property. As you can see from this image, there are existing structures on it. There's one that fronts Colley Street, and there's one that fronts Chadburn. These are the vision plan and zoning district maps for the property. As you can tell from the zoning district map- As you can tell from the zoning district map, you'll notice that the zoning ends, so the property is at the city limit. This is the notification map. There were nine notices mailed out, zero in support and zero in opposition. This is the plat. It would subdivide the land in two pieces, one of them being 0.932 acres, the other one 0.224 acres. And it would require a variance from the, from, for Colley Lane. I believe the existing paving width is thirty-six feet, or, thirty feet, and the minimum is forty. And then for Chadburn, it is also deficient. These are images of the property. And this is the image from the rear, from Colley Lane. So the rationale to approve this plan is that since it has separate frontages, it would not create any extra traffic in the area. There are, they have the separate frontages, so they already have the advantages of not having access to the roadway. The same thing, that the, the variance will not in any way, significant way vary the provisions of the zoning ordinances or any other applicable ordinances. Staff recommends approval of the third replat in Block 8, Mrs. Julia A. Bailey subdivision, and approval of the variance from the paving widths with seven conditions. These are the conditions. And as you can see, in the conditions, it stipulated the, the deficient street paving width. For the first one, it's for Chadburn, and then the second one, or, for the second condition of approval, it's the deficient paving width on North Chadburn, and the third condition of approval is deficient paving width for Colley Lane. These are the rest of the conditions for approval. Are there any questions for staff?
Okay, I have a question for you, just clarification. On item J, when, when it's on our agenda, it says it's 9.134 acres, which I think is incorrect.
Yeah.
Let's see. Should be 0.9.
Three, two.
One, three, four. And then also on that, it has it as the street's forty-five feet of North Chadburn and thirty feet for Bailey Street, which is actually Colley Lane. So we need to make sure that those are corrected and.
We can correct those into the record and into the minutes as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson.
Are there any other questions?
It looks like this lot is 1.156 acres. Is that correct?
Yes, that, that, that would be correct.
Anyone else have questions for the staff? All right, we're gonna open it up for public comment.
Russell with SKG. On this one, this is kind of a, a unique situation, and we were, we were scratching our heads on the best way to accomplish this. If you, if you look, Lot 1B, that the small .224 acre tract is less than a half acre. And, and if you look at the conditions, five is, is a condition to extend a sewer main because Lot 1B is, is less than a half acre for what you need in order to have a, a septic system on it. Sewer is, is kind of way off to the south and west a little bit, on the other side of Chadburn Street, not within 200 feet, and, and we don't know if we can even get it there from a gravity perspective. So really, the, the purpose of this, this replat is to create these two lots, and, and the Lot 1B is gonna be conveyed to the Lot 1A immediately to the east of it. That, I don't know if I can.
Yeah.
Operate this, but if you see that, Lot 1A to the east, that, the intent of this is to create that legal lot, so we can do a legal conveyance of land to Lot 1A. So I, I don't know if there's a way, you know, and then they'll bring those together, and that, that would be a greater than a half acre lot. So condition five, we would, I, I don't know the best way to do that, would be to set that aside, if you will, or defer it until some point in time they, they need or allow us, I guess, to work with engineering and staff to kind of sort out a resolution, or if there is ever a need for a septic system on Lot 1B, you know, then they, then maybe they come back and they replat Lot 1A and 1B, the other 1A.
What are the improvements on 1B?
I believe that's just an existing, and Jack Mike can help me with that.
Just an existing storage building.
Storage building? Okay. So there is no septic or?
There is no need for, for that.
No need for now.
Right. Correct. Correct.
Okay. Can we, can we put a condition that, that, that you couldn't occupy improvements on this plat or something?
I'm not sure we can make that a condition of a plat, because basically the plat is just creating a piece of property.
Maybe not occupy, but maybe no, no septic systems would be allowed on Lot 1B in its current size, less than a half acre, I think.
That's great.
Yeah, I think something like that would work. I'm curious, is there a reason this, they didn't go ahead and replat the other 1A with this one into it as part of this?
No, not, not specifically, other than trying to figure out, if, if we replatted them together, I guess 1A and one, the, the other 1A, that doesn't get us a conveyance of this little 1B to that property owner. So it's, it's always been kind of that chicken and an egg of trying to figure out, do we create, we were trying to create a legal plat to actually convey to the person, and then if and when they need to, a septic system or anything in the future, then they would have the obligation to replat. So it was, it's kind of like, do we do an illegal division, or do we come in and do a plat? So we were kind of, which route do we go, so we, so we, we come?
I guess I, I don't necessarily see a problem with that, although creating this lot without merging it with the, the other Lot 1A, under our current zoning ordinance, you can't have a storage building by itself on a lot in, in residential zoning. And so that, that could create problems for that, the, the new owner of this property in the future, that might prompt them to have to replat down the road as well, just so that everybody's aware that that, that's out there.
And I believe that would be the intent, is to get this conveyance done, and then the, the property owner of the 1B would come back and, and replat those two together and be over, over the half acre in size, so.
So is Colley Lane currently rural, branch in state?
It's, it's zoned RS1.
Colley is?
This lot?
Well, the, the, this area is zoned RS1, so Colley has a thirty-foot pavement, is kind of a rural feel. The, the area is more of a rural feel, but it's zoned RS.
But it's no longer branch in state?
Yes, ma'am. Because I guess as ranch in a state, you have to be at least one acre in size, so.
Yep.
So that's why that wasn't an, an issue, because it's RS1. So we would ask your approval of the variance from the, the roadway improvements, and then allow us to add some sort of note to the plat that requires Lot 1B to, to be.
Not have septic.
To, to, yeah, right, exactly.
Okay.
Be platted in with a, adjacent property, or be made to a compliant size before a septic system is permitted.
Okay.
There.
Can we make a, can you go to the notes where it's talking about the septic? Right there. Does anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, we're gonna close public comment. So the way this is written, you couldn't put septic on there, because it doesn't meet the, the minimum requirement. But we have a requirement that they have to submit plans for a sewer main.
That's right.
What you're asking to do, Russell, is defer that plan for the sewer main?
Well, yeah, I guess we could leave that there, or somehow allow Lot 1B to be replatted such that it meets the minimum size for a septic thing. So it, you know, could, could we come back, get this plat recorded, create Lot 1B, sell that to the neighbor, and then let the neighbor come in and buys 1B, and then get a, do the replat for that, and then they would be over the half acre in size, and then we've also satisfied this storage unit on a property without a building? I, I don't, how, how do we time that all out and, and get a conveyance, a legal conveyance?
Or do we do an illegal division by meets and bounds?
I wouldn't recommend that. The, the only problem I'm seeing is that basically waiving those requirements for five and six is a variance for which, you know, it's not been requested, it's not been notified, and it's not noticed in the, in the agenda.
Can we defer it?
Actually, we can, we can defer, or we can defer that, or we can do a variance without it being requested as a, as a commission, correct?
Why can't we just defer it?
I think you could defer it. If you do defer it, I mean, I think you do have to have some time period.
Yeah.
The way the ordinance is written, so we need to, I mean, whatever that is, but if we can figure that out, then.
Yeah, yeah, how do we do that? We, maybe we come in, we, we can defer the sewer main or keep the requirement, and, and in many cases, they'll say, you gotta do this or this. So if we, we could leave the sewer main requirement on there, or say, or replat Lot 1B in with, or create a, to meet the minimum requirement. Trying to figure out how to thread the needle between the two.
I think that would work. I mean, maybe a way to do that would be to defer it for some time period, that i- if it's resolved some other way, either the lot is made larger, or that piece is replatted within the adjacent piece, and that resolves it, then basically the requirement goes away. So i- i- if within, say, five years, it hasn't been resolved, either to make it large enough for septic, or extend the sewer, or merge it with the other lot.
That would, that would give us time to do the intent of the, this, this lot.
Yeah.
Yes.
So how long do you want?
So they'll have to extend the sewer line if those, if one of those things hasn't been done within five years, is that?
We're, we're good with that. We're, we're acceptable to that.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you.
Thanks, Russell. All right, anyone want to make a motion?
This one's been a little messy, the way it's been written out, so.
Let Brandon do it.
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion to approve the plat and the variance from, from the roadway and defer item five and six for five years.
Yeah, I think, I think it would need to also say, you know, deferred for five years unless they meet requirements for septic prior to that.
Yeah, right.
Unless they meet requirements for septic before that time.
Okay, we have a motion.
Good job, Chris.
Thank you, thank you.
Anyone want a second for this? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six, zero. Rezonings. City Council has final authority for approval of rezoning. Z2104, Downtown District, a request for approval to expand the boundary of the Downtown District Overlay Zone, generally located north of Neff's Way, east of David Street, south of Fort Street, west of Emrick Street.
All right, thank you, Planning Commissioners, Jeff Fisher, again. This is our expansion of the Downtown District Overlay Zone. This is the culmination of a series of expansions. In 2018, we created this zone out of the River Corridor. I'm not gonna go into too much detail, because most of the public, I believe, were here in the September meeting that would have gotten re-notified of this. So we brought it forward, and we had a town hall meeting, September the ninth. Mayor Gunter was there, and some of the business owners and individuals that own property downtown. We originally, this is, for those of you that are new to this process, the dark purple line is the current Downtown District Boundary. The light purple line is where we wanted to expand to. And then after the town hall, after discussions with the mayor and some of the business owners, we proposed a second alternative, where that light purple line would actually go even further to the red. Why is that important? Because as soon as you go west and south of the red, you're at the River Corridor. So if you're driving up Coningheim, you're gonna see more attention to design on buildings on both sides of Coningheim and on Abe if you pick the second alternative. So because we hadn't notified the owners within the red boundary, we only notified within, we'll call that the original expansion in the purple, we're, we had to, y'all had tabled this, and we're bringing it back. So at the end of the day, you all have two options. We have really any, unlimited options. You can keep the status quo as is, you can expand up to the purple line, or you can go option three, and you can expand all the way to the red line. This is staff's position after further discussion. It just makes sense from a design perspective that if you're driving up a major commercial corridor, if we're gonna impose design control on the east, we should have the same design control on the west. And that makes sense, too, because the River Corridor is in that green area all the way around it, so you'll have one continuous block. Again, one clarification for, for the public today, this is not, even though it's, it's part of a rezoning process, this is not changing your property rights or your zoning on your land. So if your underlying zoning over here is Central Business District, or CG, or whatever it is, you can have a bakery, you're not gonna lose those rights to have a bakery. What it means is if you expand, you put an addition on your building, or you change the color of the building, we can go through a design review. And we believe that helps with property values and aesthetics in the area, and also with, I think, the mayor and some of the other owners there in support of this, where we'd like to go forward with the red boundary. So this is the proposed Downtown Overlay District options. The one on the left was presented in September, and then the one on the right is what we're looking at now. The yellow, we just included, some of these that are historical overlay are already gonna go through a historical review. So if they happen to be some of those properties that are historical and Downtown District, we're only gonna charge the lower fee for the Downtown District, and the Historical District is gonna be much stricter than this as well. This is just to make sure that we have some design control. We don't get a really ugly building next to a building that a business owner had spent a lot of money on. That's basically what we're doing today. So really quick background, was 2009. So, really quick background, was 2019, the same boundaries were originally the River Corridor, and then we looked at creating three different districts. I did send you all the policies at your request from last month. So, the River Corridor Master Development Plan is currently our policy document that allows us to review colors and materials. So, that still applies to the boundary of the Downtown District and the Cultural District as well as the River Corridor. And I guess finally, if you're more of a heavier commercial or an industrial, you know, further away from downtown, further away from those really nice churches and buildings, you're probably gonna have less design control than, say, somebody that's right smack downtown on Chadburn. So, those Master Development Plan policies are fairly flexible as well. So, that's what came out of the town hall meeting. Just a quick update on the public notification. So, this was the original notification that went out. The red is the opposition, and the blue is in support. We pulled the line back, and we originally, when we came back in September, we moved it south of Fourth Street. Why? Because once you go north of Fourth, most of those property owners were industrial. They didn't wanna be part of this, so we appreciated that, and we moved it back. Again, most of the opposition, when we sent out the original notices, we included the existing downtown, just to be more transparent and informative. But again, that dark purple's already in the district, so if you take away the one, the opposition furthest to the north, and the ones that are already in the district, you really only have one opposition, and that's one owner along Coningheim, and then everyone else is in support. So, let me go forward. So, once we, we re-notified everybody, ninety notices were sent out to property owners, and then another eighty-two within two hundred feet. So, now, basically, we have, in the expansion area, and I'm counting the alternative plus the light purple, in total, we have four in favor and only three in opposition now. So, once we took out Fourth Street, north of Fourth, we, most of the opposition went away to this. And then the yellow was the no objection from the church. They had some concerns originally, us stopping at the purple line here, and I believe now they're, they're neutral, but they're generally in support of us extending that line. They have, they're actually happier that some of those businesses that it's going further to the, the west. So, that concludes staff's presentation on that, and we'd like to recommend approval and, and have your support, and bring this forward to City Council next month.
All right. Thank you, Jeff.
Yep.
Anyone have questions for the staff? All right, we're gonna open it up for public comment. Does anyone wish to speak on this case? If so, please come forward, state your name.
And I did pass around the new letters that were
Your address.
dropped off last week, so you have those.
Good morning. I'm Steve Eustace, a commercial real estate broker, and I own property in this district, this new proposed district. And, you know, gosh, we're all in favor of wonderful downtown area and, and the future of downtown, but I am a little confused and have a couple of concerns. So, we've got Central Business District, we've got the Downtown District Overlay Zone, we've got the Central Business District Guidelines, we've got River Corridor Master Development Plan, we have Historic Preservation Guidelines, Central Business District Guidelines. So, it's a little confusing. I'd like to first ask, so this is called an expansion, let me find it here. This is, this is the Downtown Overlay Zone, is that correct?
That's correct.
And so, which written guidelines do we follow when we're doing anything in that zone?
The River Corridor Master Development Plan, which applies to the Downtown District as well as the River Corridor.
So, we use the River Corridor Master Development Plan?
That's correct.
Even though the River Corridor, if you look at the map, is, it's just a quarter along the river?
That's correct, 'cause in, in 2018, it changed, so the, the River Corridor Master Plan, the River Corridor used to be a lot bigger, and it used to actually include this area, most of this area that's part of downtown. And so, until we update our, our policies, because they're, they're pretty good, and they generally are, are flexible, they look at, they look more at, at pockets of areas, so they're not concerned as what's downtown, what's River Corridor, they more just consider, you know, what's in your CBD and what's outside of your CBD, and then a third section, I think, talks about residential neighborhood. So, we believe that it's still applicable until we can look at maybe a, a year or two down the road of updating those policies specific for the three districts, or just, probably a better name for it would just be to call the Overlay District Design Plan, but unfortunately, 'cause it was produced before this change, it's still gonna be called the River Corridor Plan, but it does apply to this area.
So, is there a difference? 'Cause on your website?
Yep.
On Steve's website, we've got all of these listed as if they're separate. So, I own a property on Bryant and First Street, and it's an old town and country store, it's had the same tenant in it for thirty years, but I needed to fix it up a little bit. I just got finished putting a new roof on, doing air conditioning. My plan was to paint here toward the end of the year, first of January, when I got this, three or four weeks ago, the first thing I did was pick up my phone, call my painter, and say, "Get over there and paint that building right now." 'Cause I have no idea, just painting the outside of the building, what I'm gonna have to do to do that. And who is the subjective authority on these rules? Is it the staff? Or do I have to, if I were just gonna paint the outside of my building, do I have to go to staff? Do I have to go to the, this River Corridor, whatever the comprehensive commission is that? So, just tell me, I'm confused.
Yeah, for, for painting, it was made very simple, because there were some, there were some circumstances where buildings downtown were painted in ways that most people, including city council members, the mayor, Downtown San Angelo, other businesses adjacent to the business, that they said, "This is an eyesore next to me, I don't like it, why can't we regulate paint colors?", which at the time, we did not. So, that's how that came into the ordinance, largely based on existing businesses saying, "I don't want my next door neighbor to be able to do that." The way it was written is if you meet a historic palette color, you're automatically approved.
Historic palette color? I don't know what that is.
Every, you know, you go to Sherwin-Williams, you go to any paint store, they can give you a list of acceptable historic palette colors, which there are literally hundreds, if not thousands. And so, if, if you pick one of those colors, it's, it's basically a rubber stamp of approval.
But, but...
If you don't wanna use one of those colors, then you can go through a process where staff would review it, and possibly the Design and Historic Review Commission.
So, would I've had to just paint the outside of my building, would I've had to go somewhere for approval?
Yes, you would've had to come in to the planning department, fill out an application, and show us the color, say, "Here, this, this is the XYZ color palette from this particular paint store," and it would be approved, those are turned around in, in a day.
It'd be approved by staff?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. You know, I just, I wanna say, in the whole downtown district area, I, I want our downtown to thrive and be wonderful, but also don't want it to be a sterile downtown. I love the Letty's neon sign. I like the Twisted Root, and everybody from out of town go, "God, that's cool, that's cool." The last time we talked about this, just a few days later, I spent several days downtown Fort Worth at a real estate meeting, and as I walked around, I saw, it's not exactly the same. This bar and pub has a neon sign, these don't. I don't want neon signs all over our downtown, don't get me wrong, but I do want some excitement in our downtown area. And so, I just wanna make sure that we're not stifling creativity downtown. And I also don't want people to have to go through undue processes just to do something simple to their property, because we all know what a historic building looks like. My building at First and Bryant ain't an historical building, and that is, my tenants and everybody else thinks it's pretty historical, but it's not. So, I just don't wanna burden us with too many, too many regulations.
Let me clarify a couple of things there, though. I wanna make clear, I know this came up at the last meeting, this is not a historic overlay. There's no, you know, historic design standards will not be applied to any property subject to this. Now, if they also have historic zoning, then they would, but this is a, a design review that does not take, you know, again, it doesn't apply his, the historic standards, which is a different level of review only for those properties zoned historic.
If I were gonna do some exterior work, maybe add on something, of course, I don't have room, but which development plan do I pull out and read as far as what I can do in my property? Do I pull out?
If you're in this area and not historically zoned, then you would look at the River Corridor Master Plan.
And is that different than the Central Business District Design Guidelines?
I actually...
It's actually, I think what you're saying is it's part of the same document, so in the River Corridor...
There are separate documents on your website.
Okay, then it would be different. So, my understanding is in this area, you would review the River Corridor Master Development Plan. In the River Corridor Master Development Plan, the part that's called the Central Business District, which is really the old purple boundary, those would have certain standards for materials and colors, and then everything outside that district, which is gonna include this expansion and other parts of the city, would be, that are commercial, would be, it's called, you know, outside of the historic city center, would have policies. I just wanna clarify for you, too, the only two things, from all my years of experience here, that would be an absolute, almost an absolute no all the time, is the really flashy metal siding. You know, again, maybe like roofs and some trim, but like generally not a building that's gonna be right in the middle of four churches, it has this, you know, really bad R-panel metal siding, or light that's like really, really bright. So, some of those policies, the materials and colors themselves are generally pretty, pretty flexible. Like John said, the only time it's gonna be a problem is on a historical building. We're gonna have, that's gonna get a stricter control, but that was already in place anyway. But generally, if you're coming in and you want some flexibility or an art studio, you know, those colors can be pretty, you know, pretty wide-ranging. It's just, they don't wanna have something that's really, really flashy. So, it's just to protect the outliers, but ninety percent, or ninety-five percent of those business owners that are in compliance are probably gonna get those approvals. And I think when, when I look back recently on some of the DHRC cases, if it goes to the design board, most of the time, they don't deny cases unless there's, again, something that's really an outlier. They'll work with you, they might make recommendations, but usually they're minor changes. So, we usually work together as a team and try to come up with those approvals, and that's why you see like Angry Cactus or some, or Twisted Root, they're a little more eclectic, and then the historical buildings of the churches obviously get a little more stricter design control.
And, and sign, signage, is that in which of these guidelines?
Signage would be in there, too. If it's under fifty square feet, the, depending on the nature of the sign, the planning director can approve administratively and not have to go to the board. If it's greater than fifty square feet, the bigger signs, the design board would approve them.
Okay. You know, I've, I've always been treated fair at your department, and I
Sure.
I just wanna make sure we're all understanding the rules, because, you know, I, I know, for example, that Twisted Root, probably half the town thinks it's the classiest thing they've ever seen, and half don't, so who's right? Anyway, thanks for your time.
Steve, I appreciate your comments, and I, I've served on that design board in the past, and I, I share some of the same concerns that you have. And I've, and I've said this in the past, I think that developers want predictability, they want structure, they want a black box that they could work within. And if we're taking, if, if our design guidelines are the opinions of half a dozen people that you have to go stand in front of to justify what you're doing, I don't, I don't think that that's appropriate or fair, and I think developers that look at that would say, "Well, I don't know what they're gonna say to me, and I don't, I don't necessarily wanna do that, I'll go somewhere else and do this." So, I think, I think it is paramount that we focus on the guidelines and have more, more detailed, outlined parameters for what development, what, what materials are allowed to be used, what colors, so that someone can read through, like, like you're describing, and say, "Okay, I can use, I can put siding on my building, but I can't do vinyl siding, I have to do hardy board," or whatever it is, and not go to the, the, the board and have them say, "Well, we, we really don't like vinyl, but we would allow you to..." You know what I'm, so...
Yeah, exactly.
That's, that's the concern I have with, with this overlay in general. I like the idea, I think consistency of development is, is important, and will benefit everyone downtown, I just think we need to, to be a little bit more specific in our guidelines for what's allowed, and make it easier for that board to, to rubber stamp something when it's coming through, if it has to go through.
Yeah. And, and we all know what historic, I mean, it's one thing to have these rules on the main core of historic downtown, but when you expand, now you're on Bryant Thruway, you got new businesses like CVS, Walgreens, banks. I mean, are we really gonna use the same rules for this? So, anyway, I think y'all get my concern, and
Yes.
Other than that, I'm not opposed to it necessarily, I just think it's gonna cause more red tape than, than I wish we would, especially in these new areas you're including. Thank you.
Thank you.
And let me address just that last point of Steve's. He said, "Do we want the same rules in the historic areas versus Bryant?" And our, that River Corridor Design Guidelines is very specific about being context sensitive, so even things that have come to the board, if it's in the industrial area up near the freeway, they look at those areas very differently than if it's at, you know, right there on Concho Street and the Hundred Block. And so, our existing guidelines, I, I agree with you that we need to clean up some of that a little bit.
Yeah.
But our existing guidelines do make very clear that it is very context sensitive in what everything around you looks like. So, you know, a building out on Bryant is not gonna be held to strict historic standards like something on Concho would be.
Okay.
Okay, on, on that, is there also a written definition of historic?
Well, the short answer is, in order for historic standards to apply, you have to have a separate historic zoning. And so, in, in that sense, it's whatever properties have been designated by city council as historic.
So, there's not a written definition of historic, which I think needs to be clarified in that. Just as Steve said, you know, to me, historic is nineteen hundred till present, that's historic to me. However, Steve was saying that his, the people that have his building rented, which was probably built in the seventies, they assume it's historic. So, I think we need a, some kind of written definition that explains historic and not just what one interpretation is over another.
Well, if, if you'll allow me to give you
Sure.
a longer answer to that, we have just finished a process where the city received a grant to have a Historic Preservation Consultant come in and look at this larger area of downtown, and there are standards, both state Historic Commission standards as well as federal standards for what meets historic guidelines. The National Trust for Historic Preservation, for example, has standards that they do. And so, that consultant has given us a draft report that you guys will be seeing over the next couple of months, that looked at each and every building in the downtown and decided, "Is it historic? Is it contributing?", which means it has some elements that are historic, but, you know, maybe it's been remodeled enough that it's no longer considered historic, and then other buildings that aren't historic at all. And so, I guess the short answer to your question is, we have that, it, it's in probably a hundred-page document that kind of defines what that means, but you'll be seeing that at some point in the future.
So, then it would be able to go in and look up an address or a legal description and say, "This is historical, so we need to follow these guidelines."
Well...
If they've gone...
That document itself, if it identifies the building as historic, doesn't necessarily mean it has to meet any historic standards. Only if the city council follows up and creates a historic district or designates that individual property as historic, that's what kicks in the higher historic standards. So, just because we've said, "Yeah, this is historic," doesn't mean any extra rules apply until city council adopts something.
Unless you're wanting to do something downtown, is paint or whatever, and it's, has to go before that committee.
Well, the way I would describe that is if you have historic zoning, or you're in a historic district, the bar is way up here, you have to meet
Even though it's not designated, or you don't have the emblem on your building?
No, I'm saying if, if you're either designated on the National Register of Historic Places, or the city council has designated it as historic, then you have to meet this high bar of federal standards for historic preservation. If you're not designated historic, and you're just in this design district, but your building is a, is an historic building, then you have to meet a much lower bar of just general design principles, which is what applies through this whole area.
Okay.
So, as, as one example, it... So as one example, something that, the Roosevelt Building, that hopefully will be moving forward soon, they're going through a process through the Texas Historic Commission to get grants for historic preservation. And so they're going through issues of the exact type of window that has to go into that building to meet those historic standards. Whereas if it were under our rules, virtually any window would work because it doesn't have to meet that higher bar. But something that we would look at, that we've seen in other circumstances on a building like that, if somebody wanted to come in and paint the brick, that's something that we typically have not allowed. It definitely wouldn't be allowed under historic standards, but even under these lower standards, our guidelines do not recommend painting existing unpainted brick. But that's that lower standard we look at.
So the lower standard doesn't allow you to do some of the things that you would normally be able to do if you're outside of this district?
Correct.
That's correct. Now, all of that is reviewable by the Design and Historic Review Commission, so they can, they can overrule those guidelines, but they don't have a lot of ability to go beyond those guidelines to require something that those guidelines don't give them the authority to do. And we, we looked at the numbers. I was trying to pull them up here, so I don't, I don't have them in front of me, but we looked over the last couple of years, and I think there were fifty or sixty cases. We only had one, I believe, that was denied. One was tabled and then withdrawn because the commission was going to deny it. But like eighty percent of the cases were approved as requested. Another ten to fifteen percent were approved, but with some back and forth modifications by the commission. So I don't want anyone to think that we're, you know, these are very onerous standards that they're denying things left and right because that's not how our commission works.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just add to, address one more of Steve's comments. Downtown Fort Worth does have stricter standards for development than we do here, and they do have a commission that reviews all development. And so they end up with that eclectic mix, but they still do review all development.
All right.
We saw public comment open?
We have, yes, please come forward. We're still, we're still open.
Good morning. I'm James Thomas, and on the map here on the bottom, I live down in the corner where it says Concho, it's actually Tuitt. And David, make this real quickly. I suppose, I'm not sure if I'm in the historic district or not, the home has historic meaning, but I'm here trying to answer some questions for two or three of my neighbors who office out of their homes for profit. And all I want to know is, does any of this help us or does any of this hurt us for those homeowners that are down in that district? We just hoping that'd be some help.
Mr. Thomas, are you on the northeast corner of Concho? And David, did you get a letter?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
I'm on the extremity. It didn't include the historic homes across the street from me, and that had a little concern there. But as I see this, this doesn't help or doesn't harm us, as long as it doesn't put other restrictions on us.
And are you, are you a house or an office?
Well, it's a home, but I make my living out of my home. I do have a freestanding office out on Southwest, but I do, I hardly ever go to the office myself. Now, it's all my question for the people. They asked me to come, to see if this is gonna any way harm us or any way help us. So, and I don't think I'm hearing that this morning. So if that's y'all's general consensus, that's all I need to know.
It's a great question.
Well, I'll take a crack at that, but it's a, I think it could help and hurt to the extent that, if, like as Steve mentioned earlier, if you want to paint your building, you will have to come in, fill out a form. Usually takes, you know, just a couple hours to get reviewed. If you're building a whole new building or completely replacing the siding, then you would have a process that might have to go to the commission, which might take a month. And so like I mentioned a second ago, they are not very onerous, but you do have to go through that process. On the other hand, as, as I alluded to earlier, it also guarantees that your neighbor isn't going to completely devalue your property by putting up something that is completely out of the context of your area, which, you know, we have seen in areas where we get the complaints from people, how did you let so-and-so do that next door to me? So that's the balance we're trying to find here, is, is we are protecting property values, but we're also putting some burden on people who go to develop their property.
Good morning. My name is Ron Landers. I'm, my wife and I are business owners. We are just outside the parameter on North Main, and I know it's not really today's issue, but I am curious. I don't get to be here very often, and I've had some difficulty hearing, so pardon me if this question's already been answered. Just curious, is there any future thought of expansion further out, you know, toward Bell Street? In other words, obviously, I'm outside of the overlay that we're talking about today, and I assume things don't really apply to me...
Yes, sir.
...in that sense, but is there discussion on that, or is this just not an issue beyond Main Street?
Are you east of Main Street, sir?
Pardon?
Are you east of Main Street?
We're on the east side. We're on Main Street, but North Main on Corner Prycer and North Main.
I, I think if I'm correct on this, originally, we had wanted to expand the boundary further, and we had scaled it back last year, but I believe the cutoff was Main Street. And I think it's because Main Street is the end of the comprehensive plans downtown district. So our future land use, our growth area in the city for downtown, which would support downtown CBD zoning, would stop at Main Street. So I don't think that plan ever went east of that. That's not to say in ten years or something, you know, that council suggests, recommends to staff that we look at that area again, but not right now.
Okay. On another note, is the tiers boundary Main Street?
I'd have to look that up.
If you're looking at making improvements to your business, you might want to look at the boundaries of the tax increment zone. You may be in that, I seem, I seem to recall that portion being, it's very close. And there's, there's grant money available for improvements if you're looking to make them.
Okay, great. What, what did you say?
It's tiers, tax?
T-I-R-Z, tax increment reinvestment zone.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
When you say Main Street, just the cutoff, you know that centerline on Main Street?
Yes.
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 Yep.
Anyone else wish to speak? All right, I'm going to close public comment. Anyone up here want to give us their opinions or make a motion?
So I have a few thoughts and kind of to echo Mr. Thomas's question and Steve's, some of Steve's comments. I think I understand the, the need for consistency to encourage development and deter maybe something that would devalue the property surrounding, you know, what's going on downtown. And I completely support preserving our history and, and, you know, appreciating our background and kind of keeping that as a core of our downtown and developing around it. But at the same time, my concern is the existing overlays, guidelines, different governing authorities that complicate things to the point where sometimes I am concerned that even staff has a hard time keeping track of all of it to balance it out, especially in some of these overlapping areas. And so I think what I would like to see us focus on is to, is to simplify the process as much as possible. And that's easy for me to sit here and say when you're trying to regulate this, which is not easy by any stretch of the imagination. But I think, you know, I had a chance over the weekend to kind of look through the, the master development, or the River Corridor Master Development Plan, the document from two thousand six. And, you know, in the purpose and scope of design guidelines section, it, it basically says what we've talked about up here already, that the purpose of it is to guide developers as they conceive their projects for evaluation and, and for city staff, too, to serve as a guideline, but not to stifle architectural creativity. And I think that's, you know, part of that, to me, is the additional red tape and delays in bringing your project to fruition. And so I think that's the main thing that I'm most concerned about, is the additional bureaucracy that may be created. And I would like to make sure that we, you know, as a, as a commission and also, you know, city council and as a staff, too, work towards trying to, you know, improve efficiencies as much as possible and maybe, you know, at least take that into consideration. I don't have the answer for that. I just make the point of it. You know, the more committees and commissions and boards and things that we put in place that oversee it, something somebody's trying to do to bring a dilapidated, falling apart building downtown back online, then the more likely they are to walk away frustrated and throw their hands up.
Yeah, I think I can attest to staff. I got here in fourteen, so I didn't see the original document in oh-six. But what I do know is when, when we do those reviews, there's probably only ten or fifteen criteria that are really common and standard for every project. So colors and materials are consistent with the area and quality things. And again, just that no metal flashing and no extreme lighting are usually the two outliers that are absolute no's. But I'd say out of that whole booklet, it's really only about ten or twelve criteria that we look at on a, on a case, every case basis. And so I think the challenge, I guess, in the future is, when the public sees that, obviously, it's a huge book. A lot of that is more just background, and then once you skip through to the actual section where you're looking, if you're in the CBD or you're outside the CBD, it's really just a very small handful of policies. But yeah, trying to convey that to the public, I understand your concerns.
Well, if there's a way to redraw the guidelines where there's maybe more administrative approval of the design or plan that's being submitted, so that, that, that commission, that committee that's reviewing design is looking at exceptions instead of, you know, a majority of the projects within that area, I think that would help personally. And it, and it would help with the predictability of, of the development. And it would provide the structure that I think a lot of guys are looking for, or developers, people are looking for when they're, when they're looking downtown.
Well, and just, just so you guys know, I mentioned the consultant-led report on historic design areas of downtown. The next phase in that process will be applying for another grant from the Texas Historic Commission to develop the new guidelines. And so part of what you're asking for is on our schedule to do, assuming we can get that grant. To have those design guidelines rewritten, that's kind of a future step that we're working towards.
Okay.
It'd be nice to have it all together at one time, to approve this and that, all together as one item.
Anyone else have thoughts they'd like to share or wish to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented. I think we've, we've seen it enough where they've made, they've come back, they've made change after change. I think this looks good. There's always room in the future to tweak it as we need it, but putting it, putting it off any longer and, and waiting even years before we decide that we want to look at it again, I think only, you know, adds, adds another layer of work for, you know, the citizens to do as they work through projects. So I personally think this looks good.
To South David, to the red part?
Correct.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the new boundaries for downtown that expand west to David Street. Is that correct? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So six-zero. All right, next item, Z twenty-one twelve, three thousand seventeen Southwest Boulevard, a request for approval of a rezoning from the Neighborhood Commercial zoning district to the General Commercial zoning district, being point two zero nine acres located at three thousand seventeen Southwest Boulevard.
Good morning, Rafael Alvarado, Planning and Development Services. So this property is zero point two zero nine acres. It is located along Northwest, or along Southwest Boulevard. It is sort of that last parcel along the Neighborhood Commercial zoning strip that you see there, District Six, Larry Miller, and it is in the Sunset Neighborhood. I don't know why the zoning map is missing, but it is currently zoned Neighborhood Commercial. The requested change is to General Commercial. And as a matter of fact, if I go back to the satellite image, the entire commercial area that you can see to the north and to the east is General Commercial. It's essentially a very large General Commercial zoned area, and only this strip of commercial businesses is the Neighborhood Commercial area. So it helps that it's essentially on that boundary of the General and Neighborhood Commercial zones. This is the notification map. Eleven notices were mailed out, zero in support and zero in opposition. This is the property, front-facing view. Front-facing view of the property, and this is the property from the rear, facing east towards Southwest Boulevard. The vision plan corresponds with the commercial zone designation, so no comprehensive plan amendment is necessary. The zone change would be facilitated by the lot size, meaning that it meets the minimum requirements. It is compatible with the existing commercial zone area. Like I mentioned, there is a very large General Commercial Zone just to the north and directly adjacent to the property. The, the size of the building would not change, so its size and parking requirements would remain the same, considering that they are consistent with, in the two zones, Neighborhood and General Commercial Zones. And the community need in the area would just be providing additional commercial amenities and expanding that General Commercial Zone further south. And as you can see from the aerial map and the vision plan and the zoning districts, the development patterns of the area are commercial, especially within that side of the street along Southwest Boulevard. Staff's recommendation is approval of rezoning from the Neighborhood Commercial Zone district to the General Commercial zoning district. And it is recommended approval as presented.
What is the, what changes in the classification? I'm not familiar with the CN and CG. What are the major changes?
Yeah, what's allowed in CG that's not allowed in CN?
Well, generally, the size and scope of the building increases, and there are a number of uses that are not allowed in C, in Neighborhood Commercial that are allowed in General Commercial. I don't have that list.
What type of business that could go in?
Yes, the, the specific commercial use associated with the property.
Some of the more intensive uses you typically associate would be allowed in the, General Commercial zoning would be auto, auto-related uses. So those are the more intensive uses you think of as opposed to the retail and commercial aspect of it, is, is the allowable uses, is automotive is usually the most intensive.
Okay.
So around this property, is it CN?
Just, just south of the property is CN. Everything to the north of it is General Commercial and everything across this.
This is next to that Time Clock Plus building, so there's a massive General Commercial develop, but it's all set back. It's set back hundreds of feet from the road.
Way back. So can you go back to that picture, please?
So this image?
Yes.
Or the one, what was the one with colors on it? What was that?
zoning.
That's the vision map.
That's the vision map, not the actual.
The vision plan.
Yeah, we apologize for that. It, it may be something when we upload the document. But Rafael, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that one property and then all the lots facing southwest on that one block is CN, and then everything west and north is CG. Is that right?
Yes. From here, all along this way, that's all Neighborhood Commercial. And then all of this is General.
So the General Commercial is back off of the, off the road?
Yeah. And then I think you wanted to see this one? So it is right next to the Time Clock Plus building, I think.
Right.
Yeah, that's correct. I was able to pull up the map here just on my screen off the website. But basically, everything is CG, both to the north and the, I guess that's west. That strip of smaller buildings there is all CN currently.
And those are smaller lots that front on southwest as opposed to that larger commercial development that has a huge parking lot in front of it?
That's right.
Set back quite a ways. Okay.
What's the, what's the rationale for a zone change as opposed to a special use? I mean, I don't, we have not said what's going in there.
I believe it would be with the associated use. I'm not sure if a special use permit would have resolved the problem that the applicant is seeking to, to remedy. So the, the zone change would directly resolve their issue. And I'm not entirely sure. I was told that the applicant would come. Is either Mr. or Mrs. Jenkins present? Okay. If you would like, the applicant is here to answer any specific questions.
Okay. Does anyone have questions for the staff beyond? All right. Thank you. We're going to open up public comment.
I'm Taylor Jenkins, and I'm with Soto Management and Foray Management. And we're needing this to be rezoned due to TABC needing. We have another location here on Chadburn, and it was in a, I believe, a CGH?
CGCH?
Yes, that. And the lady that usually does this, she said that she had to come before y'all before and ask for conditional use or variance. And so, but we can't, since it's a CN, we have to get it rezoned to CG to get the conditional use. And our overall goal is to provide, to go wine-based daiquiris through the drive-through. There's no intent on opening a bar.
An automotive shop?
Huh?
You're not gonna, you're not gonna put an auto shop in there?
No, sir.
Okay.
No, sir. And yeah, so it's just for, to go daiquiris, wine-based, and they'll be sealed containers. And TABC requires an on-premise permit for it, just to open up the wine-based alcohol to pour into the daiquiri. So that is the whole reason behind it. And so we were.
So we don't allow liquor sales in CN?
So from my understanding, the issues with TABC and how they're defining it, so she needs a more intensive zoning use to allow for the to-go daiquiris. It's, it's like an Eskimo hut.
Yeah.
Similar concept.
No, I get, I totally understand.
Yeah, it, it's, it's an issue with the way TABC defines it and wants them to establish it.
Yes.
All right.
We just request approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm going to close public comment. I, I certainly don't object to the, the proposed use. I do, I, I do fear that if we allow for more intensive use, I, I don't want, I don't want this to change in 20 years and see a, a mechanic shop or something there because I don't think.
But there's an Avis right, like, around the corner.
A block down the street.
Yeah.
Yep. It's closer to, yeah.
It's closer to southwest, then.
It is closer to southwest, and it doesn't face the neighborhood.
That's true.
It faces the shopping center across the street.
And the CG zoning is still going to not allow that heavy mechanic use. It's going to allow like oil changes and things, but it's not going to, if you wanted a
Okay.
Heavy mechanic, I think you still need a conditional use for that.
Okay.
Yeah, and one of the things we looked at, those small buildings.
Yes.
Many of the things that you could do that are, that are, you wouldn't want in that area, it's just too small of a lot and too small of a building to do.
Okay. Anyone want to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six, zero.
So I do have one question, staff. We've already voted on that. So does CN, without TAC be involved, does it allow for sale of alcohol at all?
From my understanding, it does allow for the use they want to use.
For, I mean, our zones, okay.
Correct. So take and go. TABC is defining as on-premise based on their packaging. And so therefore, they need the more intensive zoning.
Okay, thank you.
It was a little different from my previous experience, but we'll defer to TABC.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
You have two, you have two separate permits. You have the on-premise piece, right, which is like a restaurant. You're consuming it on-premise, the bottles are being opened on-premise. And then you have a typical liquor store, right, which is the world I came from, which is off-premise. You're not allowed to open anything in this store, right? So you're, they're changing their permit, right? Because currently you're off-premise.
Correct.
So that triggered all kinds of stuff from TABC.
Correct. All right.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, special uses. City Council has final authority for approval of special uses. SU2102, amendment to SU501, 503 West Avenue R and 502 West Avenue S, a request for approval of an amendment to a special use to allow the sale of retail merchandise, including outdoor sales, in a single-family residential zoning district, being approximately .298 acres located at 503 West Avenue R and 502 West Avenue S.
Thank you. And, and we will find out why some of those JPGs weren't uploaded, even though they were in the PowerPoint. So let me just speed through here. At 2005, there was a special use on Avenue R, and the applicant has bought the property immediately to the south and wants to expand his business. And what he does is he sells, it's basically retail sales of imports and also trees and some landscaping. So it's, what the request was and what wouldn't be allowed normally in the RS1, obviously, or even in CN, is the outdoor storage component. So because there was an existing special use, Commissioner Herrick asked that question earlier, do we go with zoning or do we go with special use? In this case, we're recommending an expansion of the special use to include the south property to allow them, because there's already one to the north. Maybe if this came in brand-new today, we might have a different opinion, but we're just, this is all that Mr. Flores is doing, is just expanding one lot to the south. And so he'll be able to sell outdoor merchandise on both lots. Nineteen notices were mailed out. We didn't receive any back. This is the view. So Avenue R, he's got his retail store. And then in the back, he sells some trees and he's got some outdoor retail items as well. He was required to put in two paved parking spots, which can directly back out onto the street. So that's what you see in R. And that's the view from South Bryant Boulevard. We gotta fix this. As you go further south, you can see there's a, a line of very tall trees there. Wow, okay. Anyway, as you go further south, that lot is completely vacant. So we believe that the special use is appropriate, but we do want some conditions on it. I'm going to go over those now. So we looked at the criteria of 209H, the zoning ordinance, it complies. The approval conditions will require shielded lighting. There's some setbacks from outdoor merchandise. I'm just going to go back to this picture here. So if you're driving along South Bryant, those trees are really, really tall. If someone's pulling out from the alley or further down an S, we just didn't want a huge swath. So I did talk to Mr. Flores before the meeting, and our discussion was to move, even though there's about 15 feet of right-of-way, just move it back about 10 feet. He can still sell items or smaller items up to four feet tall in that area, but just basically shifted it over just a little bit. And then remove some of the trees he's got in the first picture, in the site triangle on the corner and into the boulevard. So I think if he just moves everything back a little bit, he should be fine. The other condition that we're requiring on the new lot is another two paved parking spots. If he comes in, and an employee, it's going to create some spillover parking. This is not Chick-fil-A or McDonald's. It's not going to generate a super amount of traffic, at least not when I went out there. But we will want another two spaces on, on Avenue S, and that should provide at least enough parking, we believe. Property will comply with the zoning ordinance, and also, there's been several other properties along this area. Council had kind of set the comp plan, comprehensive plan, commercial along three lots on either side of, of Bryant on both sides. So he's the first lot on the corner. I think we've done about four zone changes over the past several years. So again, this is being done by special use amendment, because there was already a special use there. So staff's recommending approval, subject to nine conditions. I'm just going to go over those real quick. Permitted uses shall be limited to the sale of retail merchandise, including outdoor sales. That's number one. Number two, subject to the CN development standards. If he, once he moves those trees back a little bit, he'll be in compliance. Number three, no outdoor loudspeakers. Number four, if there is lighting that it's shielded. Number five, the two new parking spots. Number six, no structure merchandise taller than four feet. Should be located within that first 10-foot line from Bryant, just for site visibility purposes. Number seven, the applicant was showing us some fencing. He had some ideas about having some steel posts along Bryant, just to protect his equipment. I think we're okay with it. We just, our planning director and staff would just like a, a drawing or a photograph of what type of fencing he's going to use, and just make sure that that's acceptable, just because it's very prominent, that intersection. Eight and nine, really quick, this is just standard policy. We have a right to go back and verify compliance over time, and that this special use will revoke and replace SU0501. We've basically taken the same conditions in 0501, and we've just added a little bit more. No, yeah, I've already said that. Just a couple notes. Before, city council will want a revised concept plan. Just showing the fencing and the parking area, I don't think that's an issue. And then just again, remove the trees and the merchandise within the site triangles and the setbacks. The applicant is here for any further questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to open it up for public comment. If you wish to speak on this case, please come forward, state your name and address, or single member district.
Good morning. LBS Flores. I'm just trying to expand my business. I'm hard at this.
Yes, sir. Okay. Do you want to have questions for Mr. Flores?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Flores.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm going to close public comment. Anyone want to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve as presented.
We have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Six, zero. Conditional uses, planning commissioner has final authority for approval of conditional uses. Appeals may be directed at the city council, or request, excuse me, CU2114, 214 West 27th Street, a request for approval of a conditional use to allow for household living in the General Commercial, Heavy Commercial zoning district, being approximately .3 acres located at 214 West 27th Street.
So this is the view of the, of the property. It is 0.3 acres. It is existing CGCH zoning. However, it is nearby residential zoning, District Four, Lucy Gonzalez, Reagan neighborhood. Now, the vision plan for this property, as you can see, is kind of interesting. It's both commercial and neighborhood, as how the lines were drawn. The other thing I should, you should know about this property is that it is plotted as three lots, and that is where the, the homes would, will be going. The zoning district for it, as, as I mentioned earlier, is general and heavy commercial. The 200-foot buffer is on the left. There were 11 notices mailed out, zero in opposition and zero in support. No, these are the wrong pictures. Yeah. Okay.
I have the pictures if you'd like to see them.
I looked at them earlier.
So this is the rationale.
I got them.
The household living would adequately serve the neighborhood and the exist, and the surrounding land uses. There is actually a home directly to the north of the part, of the property. And, yeah, and it would, the, the existing roadway connections would serve household living sufficiently. It would have minimal impact on the environment. There is a community need indicated by the encroachment of household living into this existing zoning district. And then the, the size and configuration of the lots is would, while it's in a different configuration to the existing lots, it, it wouldn't be too dissimilar. So it would, it would follow the development patterns of the area. Staff is recommending approval of, this is also, wow, I don't know. I, I apologize for the mix-up in the slides. This is incorrect. It is approval for a conditional use to allow household living in a CGCH zoning.
Got it. Okay. Thank you, Rafael.
So Rafael, I have a question for you. So is it one lot or is it three lots?
It's, if I remember correctly, it's plotted as three lots, legally plotted. So it, it has all the requirements to.
So it's currently plotted as three lots, and we're going to make it one lot?
No, no, no. That is just how it comes out on GIS because of the, I guess, the, the parcel, the, the unit that the appraisal district uses. And so that's how we make the maps. But there will be three homes going on to the three legally plotted lots in the existing property.
Okay. Do we know the size of the lots or anything like that?
I think.
The size?
That should have been on the first slide. I, I do not have the, the size, but you can see there are lots two, three, and four.
There was a survey included. It just didn't convert over, for, for whatever reason. We're having issues converting the PowerPoint slides over. The applicant did provide a survey that shows the size of the lot. I believe it should be in your packet.
Yeah, it should, it should.
It's not in there.
Oh. Because the other thing about this property is that there was a private sewer easement. But I'm a little vague on, on exactly how that would fix the issues. I don't know, Aaron, if you could help.
You bet. Aaron Vanoy, Assistant Director of Planning and Development Services. So the applicant, and I'm going to see if I do this correctly, if I not, the applicant is trying to solve some issues here. He does have three plotted lots going, facing 27th, but this house here actually has a sewer service line that cuts across his lots to here, and there's a sewer main that cuts in the middle. And what he has done is worked with our Engineering Services Division to create a sewer easement along the back. And by allowing this conditional use and moving in homes here, he will actually be able to correct some of those sewer items when he goes to develop those homes. And it's just adjacent to this neighborhood, as well as this is still an existing residence, although it's zoned CG. It is an occupied residence, and he's looking to, to solve that problem for those vacant lots. And it is in our infill area. And so he is eligible for some infill funding if he does get awarded a conditional use for household living.
Okay.
So Aaron, that, the house, did you say it is on sewer or septic?
It is on sewer, but the sewer service line cuts across somebody else's property, which is usually a problem.
Yes, pretty much.
As you all know.
Yes.
But, yeah, and the applicant is here to discuss if you have any questions for the applicant. And he did provide us with a survey, so we apologize that didn't get into the packet and, and up on the, the screen.
Okay.
It's all right. Okay. We're going to open it up for public comment.
Hello, everyone. My name is Bill Feist. I'm the owner. And to help you all out a little bit.
And to help you all out a little bit, I am going to provide you all, I only have two of them. Survey that way, and I'll put one of the survey this way.
Great.
And then you'll see exactly what I'm doing.
Perfect.
So I've owned this property for more than 10 years.
Yeah, 54.
I've made multiple efforts to try and market it, you know, as a heavy commercial. And it absolutely just fell on deaf ear, nobody didn't care to. Street's not real wide there. Lots are real shallow for commercial use and such that. And if you look on the survey, you'll see in 1951, they put a 10-foot easement right between lots three and four, which made it just pretty much, just killed it right there for anybody wanting to do commercial. They thought, you know, well, I have to contend with them, you know, with a...
With an easement.
With an easement.
Yep.
I mean, who in the world would want to mess with an easement in a commercial application? But I also own the house, looking on that picture up above, the house just to the east of that diagram, 2701 North Far Street. I own that house there. And like I said, I've owned it for more than 10 years. And the sewer line, of course, this was done back, you know, 1950s.
Long time ago.
You know, not, long time ago. You know, longer than I am old. That's a long time. But anyway, you cut across, the sewer line that actually exists for that house runs across the back of Lot 5 diagonally, across Lot 4, and cuts right into where that sewer main comes in together. And it has been problematic for me for quite a few years because it's, it's, doesn't, you know, either it's settled or whatever. We've, I've had issues with it having to go in there and have it cleaned out. So it, that needs to be kind of fixed. By doing this and developing it and helping meet the needs of the city for housing in the north side of town would accomplish all that.
Okay.
Appreciate y'all's support.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm going to close public comment. Anyone want to make a motion or have questions?
So with what Erin told us, I think it's, that's an alarm we're supposed to leave or something.
Not knowing how to use your iPhone.
So, so we do know then from Erin that we would, that the sewer is going to be corrected and everything during this process?
Yes, he's already worked with engineering services, and he's already recorded a separate sewer easement that will fix these items.
Okay. Perfect. Okay. Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Six, zero. CU 21-15, 123 South Park Street. Request for approval of conditional use to allow short-term rental in the two-family residential zoning district being approximately .321 acres located at 123 South Park.
Okay. This is our last case today. So this is for a short-term rental at 123 South Park Street. It's on 0.321 acres. It's a really nice spacious old home in the Santa Rita area. You're very close, within walking distance of the river and another park in the area to the north, and also the Borghardt and probably a very short drive to downtown. So they want to use this, be able to use this house for a short-term rental. District 5, Lane Carter, and again, in the Santa Rita neighborhood. The zoning is RS2. So they go through this process, and y'all approve the conditional use. They can move forward. Just again, for some of the, the public, this would allow them to do this for a year. And then we would re-review in a year. They would come back again. And then the conditional uses would be every two years after that. We got three notices of support that were emailed to me. I got those late last week. So all of the owners around that area, that storage building on number nine, and then there's a house on 13, and then another house on, on 12. So they're in support, none in opposition. This is the view from South Park of the house, kind of a light yellow color. This is the view from South Park Street. So there is probably about seven parking spaces on site. They've got a double-car garage and then a U-shaped driveway where they could fit another, and then in front of the garage. So I think together, I calculated, probably get a total of seven cars. And for a short-term rental, they only need two spaces. So they're well in compliance with that. Similar to other short-term rentals, there's no changes proposed on the outside of the home. So it's still going to look like a single-family home from the outside. And again, it's within walking distance of the river, Civic League Park, and some of the retail stores in that area. So this one's very straightforward. We're recommending approval. The owner shall maintain the required two off-street parking spaces. And again, they really have seven. And then the owner shall obtain a certificate of occupancy for the short-term rental from permits. Any questions or comments?
Nope. Thank you, Jeff.
I believe the applicant is here, if you have any questions.
I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward, state your name.
I'm Katie Caruth, and I am new to San Angelo. And so it's nice to see you all in person. I have another home that I share time in, in Colorado. It's located right behind the Broadmoor. It is much lovelier than this home, actually. And so it's, this will be my home while I'm here, and that will be my home while I'm there, and then vice versa. We do the same thing. It is short-term rental as well. It's very expensive. This is never going to be some sort of slum kind of place, and I would, I would keep this the same way. I spent five and a half months in a hotel room in San Angelo when I first arrived. So I know that there is some need for some higher-end housing as available. So any other questions for me? We are really landscaping, so it should look better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For anyone else wish to speak on this case? I'm going to close public comment.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Six, zero. Directors' report.
The only thing I have is related to your next item, just mentioning the November 1st special meeting. I think now we've gotten word from most of you that you're able to make it. Let us know if that changes. But as of now, we're still planning to move forward with the November 1st meeting, which would be two weeks from today. It will largely be a discussion of the sidewalk ordinance, although, as we mentioned earlier, we're going to put that one plat case on there just to help the applicant. At this point, we're not 100% sure if it will be purely a discussion item to talk through some issues, or we may have the ordinance ready for you to review at that point. I think you've all gotten a, a previous draft of the ordinance. We did have a development task force meeting. We have since met with a smaller group, and I think we've worked out all of the minor issues, the little details of the ordinance. And so really, it's coming, coming down to, the big question is, where do we require sidewalks? Just in major streets and commercial areas or within new developed subdivision residential neighborhoods as well? And so that, that will be coming on November 1st.
John, I have a request. So if on November 1st, we are, you think, or before that, you think we're in a position to vote on it, if we would have a minimum of one week to have that, to look over and to dissect to our best ability, I think that would be very beneficial instead of just having it, you know, getting it on Thursday or Friday and then say, okay, let's vote on Monday.
No, I think that's a good point. If, if we're not able to get that to you a week in advance, then we'll make it just a discussion item, and then you would give us direction, then we would come back at a future meeting with the actual ordinance.
Thank you.
Sounds great. Thank you. All right. Future meeting agenda announcements.